Work session to order. Welcome back, Kristen from the OSBA. We took a little self-evaluation survey, so we're gonna go over those results.
Great, alright.
Alright, thank you. Well, that was a timely meeting. Appreciate that. Alright, thank you. Thank you all for participating and filling out the self-eval. You did get it in advance and you've got paper copies in front of you. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen and sort of walk you through what we're gonna do tonight. Bear with me as I share it and then give it for me a second. Take it pretty nicely. That'll turn it nicely. There we go. Okay. So, the first thing we'll do is I sent along some questions in advance for you to be thinking about. And I'd like to go through those. We won't spend a ton of time on these, but but wanted you all to be thinking about this. And then, you know, we'll go through sort of the the big overall strengths that you saw, the big overall areas of improvement that you saw, we will drill down a little bit. I, you know, brought my own observations as your Karen disinterested third party. And we will go through some, a report that I did that you don't, which is a congruency report, which is where are you all on the same page? And where do you differ in your opinions about things? And then what I'd like to do is have you set at least one goal for your own professional development. And that is not unrelated, but distinct from whatever goals that you are involved in with your strategic plan. Though it should not be completely divorced from the other work that you're doing. But a board goal for its own relationships development or involvement is an important thing to do. What I have done is bring some just ideas to throw out at you based on what I see here. And these are not things that obviously I would assign to you or anything, just some thoughts. So so that is what we'll do. So my first question to you was, what did you observe about the data and the report? At this point, this is hard to do, but we won't do interpretations, just observations. And we all want to jump into, here's what I think this means. But at this point, I just want, just what did you see as you looked through it?
Mostly blue.
Mostly blue? Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, very, very few responses were in the effective.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right. Good modeling observations. Anything, anything else that you just saw?
Many things I saw too, just, yeah.
Yeah. Yep, strong.
I also, well, and two, there's, there's four of us taking this survey, so that's the results based on board.
Yeah.
Not a lot.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. When are you appointing, by the way, to your plan?
Maybe December.
Me, oh, maybe December, okay. So.
And just to, I know we're not beginning of it. The details, but how can it, when there's four of us, I would think that all of the bars would be multiples of twenty.
So there were a couple of questions where not everybody answered.
Yes, but even still.
But no, that's standard because there's multiple questions within that standard. Yeah.
Oh, now we got it.
Yeah, I, I went in first class and it, I also wondered that, yeah.
I mean, everybody's doing math, alright? Now, fortunately, I have nothing to do with the math, so this is all, so I can't say I messed it up. But yes. Yeah, multiple questions per standard. And then on everything, as, I mean, if you looked at each of the questions, there were some that not everybody answered, so. Okay, the next question is now, was there any meeting that you made just in general as you looked through? Like, what did you think about all of this?
In gen- just a.
Yeah, in general.
We'll get them, yeah. Um. Overall, I'm pretty happy that the board views itself and assesses itself that we are, you know, effective in most areas. Do we have areas growth? Yes, but we have mostly effective or accomplished compared to some other reports I'm sure that you get.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, I just, and I, I recognize it just as I was filling out, filling out, going along myself, thought, oh, we are pretty good, you know, you know, the different things. It was kind of nice to see and then you look at it, says, yeah. Yeah, there's agreeance back to that. We're doing a pretty good job.
Right. That's an important recognition too, that as you're going along and filling out, you know, how you feel. Like, when you feel strongly about something and then you get the report back and, you know, the rest of your team feels a similar way. You know, it's like, oh, well, it wasn't just me thinking this, right? Yeah, anything else? Any other sort of meeting you made up?
Do you have different surveys for boards or districts that are a small district and then a large district?
No, this is, this survey is based on the balanced governance model that, that is that research-based model that we use and teach from. So this is that balanced governance survey developed by Tom Malsbury. And so, because it's, it is on the twelve standards that we teach from. So, because this is grounded in that research about how boards impact student outcomes, this is the one that, that we do.
So when I was filling it out, I was like, wow, this is really intense at certain parts. It was a lot to try to process and think through.
And the research is done on, on districts of all sizes and the all sizes, you know. And because, I mean, it's, it's research that is, you know, over decades. And so and so it's not meant to, you know, these standards are not meant to be just like representative of large urban boards or anything like that. You know, it's meant to be, you know, these things are about the behaviors and characteristics that can, even if sometimes customizable to, to different communities, are meant to be applicable to, in, in some way to all boards. Even if the implementation of those things has to be customized to the size or location of the district. What do you find, what get you as the overall strengths and areas of improvement as you watch through?
Just like, looking at the standards level, definitely the strengths of budgeting and financial accountability. Also, the vision directed planning. One area that I think that we obviously stands out is the culture responsiveness.
Yeah, that was the only area with some red in it. And, and as you pointed out, like, the, the budgeting and financial accountability teams had no yellow even, right? No, no developing in that at all.
And I would add to that, I think community engagement with, I mean, of all the yellows, that is the most yellow. And when I answered, I actually probably rated this as more developing there because the specific questions, like, I am not a lobbyist, I am not out in the community, literally advocating for school, local businesses, so. And it is a priority for ours. I don't know that it's an area where we want to focus. I just, me personally, as a single board member, I don't think that's one of my strengths. I don't think I'm accomplished there, because I choose not to be. So, you know, that's where I landed on that. And I, I put something about that to the, the community engagement isn't as strong as, you know, if that's what we're expected to do, we're not out there that much. And even if I'm, I'm out there doing things in the community, I don't feel like people even ask me much, how I'm gonna do about things either, so. That could be, because I don't really have kids in the, in the schools now, other than my son teaching, you know.
Yeah, see, and I, within different events that I attend and stuff, I would say that I do get the questions there because I have
Kids.
Kids in the school and are having conversations with people who also have kids.
And I, I've gotten the impression that especially you and Mark also have more people in the community that do maybe contact you or say, say things to you because you're savvy and you do have your kids and you with your kids and stuff too, where I don't so much.
Do you have any questions at this meeting? Would you come to the meeting with any questions? After looking at anything that you either would like addressed here at the beginning or that you would like addressed throughout? Or you want to just front load?
What is your ten thousand, but your?
This is a very strong report. I mean, as you mentioned, I have seen reports of all kinds. From very strong like this to a lot of red, right? And as we dive into, you know, the details, I think the other thing about this, and we'll talk about this, is there are also very few areas where there are, like, individual indicators, a lot of rainbows, right? There are very few, there are very good indicators where you didn't agree. And so, there's a lot of cohesiveness here, at least as you're looking at your own performance. And, and so, you know, I mean, again, very strong, as you set your goals, one of the things that I encourage you to do is, like, even when you've got, and I, we'll talk about this, but even when you've got a really strong report come back, it's important even at that point to like then, okay, dig deeper, right? Because when you don't have a report that comes back with all kinds of red, where it's like, okay, where do we start? It's like, okay, now, so like, now we're a couple layers down, right? We want to keep improving, so we can use all kinds of strengths to then keep going. And so that challenge will be, you know, if we're strong in a lot of areas, how do we want to leverage our strengths to get even stronger and better? Particularly if you've got a new board member that you're really onboarding, like, how do you want to, you know, onboard somebody? And bring them along, and, and so maybe consider any of that new dynamic too, as we look at what your goal might be. But, but a very strong, very strong form. And I won't tell you about it, but. And so this is the last question that we won't answer right now, but, you know, what do you want to do with this information? Because the last thing that we want to do is just hand you this and say, good job, and then, you know, and then do nothing with it. Because that, this is useless unless you use it to, to do something with it, and to set a goal and take some action. So, yes, we're all looking at the front page, this is your summary. I will go through, as we can see, your overall themes, and then I've got a report that doesn't just show this, but like, by the numbers. And this is in order, your overall strengths were, obviously, the top one was budgeting and financial accountability. The second one was essentially your roles and responsibilities, which was a tie by the numbers with vision directed planning. So your next two were conduct ethics and relationship with the superintendent and vision directed planning. Your, um. Why are you moving? Oh, that's weird. I don't know why that came out of order. So what do these mean then, as far as the actual definition of these standards according to balanced governance? So, when we look at budgeting and financial accountability, you know, this is what we think of. Ensuring that your strategic educational goals are translated into reality, right? Through not just knowing what the budget is, but ensuring that your, that your strategic plan is translated into reality and that your district is financially sound, you're utilizing resources based on student needs. Then your conduct and ethics, ethics and a relationship with the superintendent, you understand those rules and responsibilities, everybody does. And you support and practice team building as an essential part of your relationship. And then finally, vision directed planning, you know, obviously, you've got a strong strategic plan and you develop that shared vision focused on student learning. That is the foundation of your policymaking, your planning, your resource allocation and activities. And so you can see where all of these things meld together, you know, there's a lot of overlap in all of these standards. But particularly that, that budgeting and financial accountability and the vision directed planning, those, those really go together. Because when you've got that strong plan, you've got to have the resources to tie into that and you've got to be able to allocate those resources to support that. But nothing happens without knowing what your role is either, and having that strong relationship with your superintendent. So that's a nice package of strengths to have. So then I go through, what I do next is I go through and find, like, sort of by the numbers, what are your specific highest strengths? And, and then I try and, to the extent possible, group them into themes, like, what are some, what are some questions that have some common elements or some relationship with each other? So that I'm not just listing the questions that, that come the highest. So the first one was that you monitor the progress of your strategic goals. You align your budget and your superintendent evaluation to those goals. That showed up in a number of questions that all seem to have that theme. So there's that alignment with your strategic goals and you do that with a number of components. So that's, that's an important thing. Another one that got, that scored really high that I just left on its own, was that you model relationships built on trust and respect. That's, that's an important thing to stand alone by itself, because as you know, you know, your culture feeds the rest of the district's culture, that's important. A couple of these went together, you do not use your office for personal gain, you do not attempt to speak individually on behalf of the board. Particularly that speaking individually on behalf of the board can be really important from time to time. And then another specific strength that was really part of standard twelve is that you review your monthly financial statements, you understand your role in the oversight of the budget. So those were your, your highest specific strengths. Overall, by the numbers, areas of improvement as you identify cultural responsiveness, standard two being community engagement, and then standard ten innovation and creativity. Those were the, the top three by the numbers. I don't know why this is happening with this, like, I think I might animation wrong. So cultural responsiveness, you know, how is this defined? Recognizing cultural diversity in its many facets, developing an understanding of diversity, applying perspectives, responsive, or responsive to the community, using that in policy and program approvals, and supporting effective community engagement, build on the strengths of the community's cultural diversity in the many forms that it takes. How does balanced governance define community engagement then? Recognizing that all members of the community are stakeholders and the success of the schools, using that reciprocal advocacy process. So the community wants something from the district, what, what are your needs? How are they communicated to the community as well? And just those, that two-way conversation system connections, those two-way feedback loops, supporting collaborative partnerships. And then innovation and creativity, the fun one. How do you translate your dreams into reality in, in new and, and interesting ways? While keeping your same, your governance role intact and making sure that you are still physically sound, utilizing resources based on student needs, which, again, there's some overlap there with other standards. So those are the three, the, the definition of those three. So again, putting things into some themes where it is appropriate. The climate of caring, respect and valuing of students' cultures is established through board policies and goals. And the board has a process to review policies for bias and cultural responsiveness. There were a couple of these, this area of improvement that sort of stood out in a couple of questions, wanted to highlight those and put those together. Another area of improvement that I combined together, establishing and sustaining relationships with community leaders, educational organizations and other government officials to remove barriers to creativity and innovation. And I, as you're reflecting, I'm hearing you say that, like, that's not necessarily, you know, individuals' strengths or, and sometimes the question is like, what is the board's role actually in doing that, right? And I think that that varies district by district, right? There are some districts where, like, you know, they are members of, you know, certain community organizations or they're in Salem all the time, you know, advocating when, when it's in session. Or, you know, there's tight relationships between board members and city councils or, or whatever. And there's a pretty defined boundary about what a board member does or whatever. And then there's a lot of personal interest in doing that. And that is negotiable by, by district, by interest, by individual board member's time as well. You know, I mean, like, I'm a board member, could I do that all day long? No, I don't want to. But, so I think that, you know, the individual components of some of these standards are sort of negotiable based on the needs of, especially when we get into community engagement, where, I don't know if I've said this to you before, but like, that's the one standard that is so highly district-specific that I'm never gonna walk into you and say, this is what community engagement looks like, right? Because that is very specific to your community. Ensuring that employees are representative of the values and the cultures of community, right? So when you say, like, this is our strategic plan, this is our vision, and this is our mission, this is what we believe in, how do you get buy-in from your staff, right? Like, how, how do you know that, like, that is being carried into, what are the expectations that you have? You're not evaluating staff, right? But what is the expectation of, from the board, that, like, that is, that is throughout the district, right? And then, the board pursuing opportunities to learn about research-based best practices that ensure continuous improvement for the next generation of learners. So how do you, how do you educate yourselves or work with your superintendent to learn about what is going on in teaching and learning? And, and those, you know, we as board members are not suggesting strategies, but how do you learn enough about what's happening in the classroom, that you're informed? And, you know, when you make the big decisions that you make, like, you know what is being measured, you know what's happening. Any questions about any of those? Okay. So now the congruence part, and this is where I get a report that I don't give you, which is, where are you most in agreement? So like, let's say there was even one that was all red, you're still in tight agreement, right? But in your case, there wasn't one, right? But the area of highest congruence was standard ten. Like, even though that wasn't one of your strengths, you were, you were all, like, by the numbers in highest agreement about standard ten. And the area of highest incongruence was standard eleven. So even again, though that was fairly strong, that was the one that had the most indicators, where you had the, the most color differences. So there was a lot of, like, three different colors on those, or at least more there than there were in others. Not a huge percentage of incongruence, if you take it into context. But the report showed that that was the area of highest incongruence, just by, again, by the numbers. So, again, again, no, like, rainbows all over the place, but that was the area of highest incongruence. So some specific areas of incongruence, and I go back and forth between what I can see and what I can't. Specific areas of incongruence, and I only picked out ones, I mean, I think there was only like, well, there was, yeah, there weren't any that had, like, the whole rainbow. I only picked out ones that had three colors on them, and there were so few. So I only reported here the ones that had three colors on them. And of course, there are only four of you right now. So, these were the ones that had the three colors on them. The board ensuring that the superintendent and staff clearly understand their roles and responsibilities in creating and supporting a culture of high expectations throughout the system, that's question thirty-four. And I will say, before we go on, I should have said this before, I read that first one. These are, as we look through these, I don't expect everybody to remember exactly what their answer was necessarily. But as we go through these, the reason that we talk about, like, you know, these is because if we're in a question where somebody said this is developing, somebody said it's effective, and somebody said it's accomplished, that range is varied enough that it may be worth some conversation. And sometimes it's about just calibration of the question, like, I read it this way, oh, I read it this way. If we talk about it, we actually kind of think the same thing. And sometimes it's interesting enough to the full board that they actually experience the things differently and want to talk about that. We don't have to talk about every one of these, but what I want to do is point these out in case they're, in case you want to discuss, like, hey, this is important enough, I think that we should discuss this. The second is the board ensuring that data used in decision-making is disaggregated, culturally representative, and provides the ability to monitor, monitor strategic goals. So there was some disagreement there on whether that kind of data is used, question forty-one. The board creates a system in which high levels of student learning are expected, question fifty-two. Each member of the board understands and respects the distinction between the board's responsibilities and the superintendent's duties. Question thirty-one. Board members represent the interests of the entire district. Question thirty-two. And the board and superintendent agree on the information needed by the board, when and how the board receive, and when and how the board receives that information. So I wonder if any of these, as you look at these, are, make you go, oh.
Kristen, I'm just gonna, I think you meant question seventy-nine on that.
Don't mean seventy-nine.
Which is the board and superintendent? No, maybe not. No, seventy-eight is the three colors. Seventy-eight. I'm thinking eighty, eighty is just two colors.
Is that, did I number it wrong?
I don't know, I don't see any other red color.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, seventy-eight. Yeah, but the, the, Steve is correct, the question uses.
Oh, that's why I've been going from.
Yep, perfect.
Yeah, you're right, yeah, sorry. Um, yeah, the number is wrong. Are there any of these that are, that as you look at them, make you go, hmm? And are interesting enough to you that you would want the perspective of the rest of your fellow board members? As far as, how do we feel about this as a board? Do we really have the same experience here and we want to discuss this? As far as why do we disagree about these things?
I think, I mean, all to be actually interested about, that there was three colors on all of them.
Yeah.
I would just. For me, my interpretation of question number thirty-four, I'll start at the top.
Yeah.
Uh, the board ensures the superintendent, clerk and staff clearly understand that their roles and responsibility in creating and supporting a culture of high expectations throughout the system. So this kind of ties in the way I interpreted it along with question number seventy-one, where it says, you know, you understand and respect the distinction between the board's responsibilities and superintendent's duties, right? So it was like, from my perspective, we ensure the superintendent understands their role, right? And then that's the superintendent's duty to then make sure that the staff understands their roles and responsibilities for that high expectation that's set by the board. So that's how I interpreted that question. And so, I was kind of like wondering, like, well, how does the board convey to the staff, because we are policy, right? We're, we're, you're working with the superintendent, and that's the superintendent's role, the distinction. So that's, I mean, I don't know if anybody else has a different way of interpreting that.
I, I see that first one, there is, you know, do, do the staff understand, taking us out of the picture, the staff understand their role, responsibilities, you know, in creating, in using this system of high expectations, supporting a culture throughout the system, and we are then responsible for the system.
And I think we can actually, in addition, monitor how that's looking and hold the superintendent accountable. And that's how we can ensure that staff are too, right? So it's kind of, yeah, I see what you're saying. It's a, it's more of a, through the superintendent, if he can monitor and that, you know.
And again, like you said, I should mention the interpretation of how I read the question.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, and that's how I read the question, but it could then
Yeah.
interpreted.
Yeah, because you can look at it like, oh, arms, the board's supposed to ensure the staff is understanding too, I mean.
How might you do that, though? What is the lever that you have to ensure? Now, yes, I mean, you're absolutely right, like, the superintendent is, is your touch point to the rest of the district. But like, you have levers to also communicate directly to each staff member. But like, your lever is through the strategic plan, through policy, through discussions at board meetings, through, you know, like, setting expectations as well, right? Like, you know, you also set, and hold the vision and direction of the district too, right? So there, there are, like, even, you know, I mean, there are direct expectations that are set. And then there's just sort of the cultural expectations that are set by modeling as well. And I think that that's part of, you know, there's, there's sort of the, the hard things and the soft things. And I think that that is, is partly what is being addressed here, is like, what are the levers that you use to ensure? It's like, what are the levers that you use to ensure that?
Yeah, but calibration of the co- of, yeah, question is important. Yeah, and we, we could do that by, you know, just like looking at, let's say, priority one, the academic excellence, right? So when it comes to our math and our, you know, reading scores and stuff, it could be asking questions, okay, like, here are our scores. What are we going to do about it? What is our plan as a district?
Mm-hmm.
To help, right, uh, increase in the areas that we need the, the most growth.
Right, right. Yeah, and asking questions and monitoring, right?
Like, that's a huge piece of that as well.
What else is interesting to you that you would wanna know from, or talk about with your colleagues?
I found the last one to be interesting. The board and superintendent agree on the information needed by the board, when and how the board receives that information?
I would be, it's like, I've solid that.
Yeah.
Yes, because I, I find that the weekly information very helpful.
I guess, yeah.
I wouldn't change anything about it, so that one was, that one was such a surprise to me.
I wonder too, just totally even, like, I'm new. And so I also understand if some of these, if folks are like, oh, it's developing, because the, you know, I'm new, these relationships are new, you know, are we on the same page? And so, yeah, I think that would be one of my questions, right? That in my, yeah, I don't know which ones I, I can tell you, but, but I can remember that kind of a thought going through my mind, because Lisa's new, so some of these, and I feel strongly about that, that they're going well, but they're still in that developing stage, because she's new.
Right, yeah, developing literally means develop, right? It's not a punitive.
Yeah, I never, I would not have thought if I had put that on any, and I'm sure there were some that I put that on that was never a negative thing. Cause like, okay, we're working on it, this is coming along, or, yeah.
Right, yeah. What about the data one? What about number two? What are your thoughts about how you use data in that way? Because that one, as I read it, is objective, or closer to objective, like, do you use that kind of data, or do you?
We get a lot of that, because when the attend- the administrative report, you know, at each school board meeting, and that's one of the areas they're telling us about, and when they've done testing, they're informing us about those things. And then we have that opportunity to ask them questions about it, you know, if something's higher or lower, or before we even answer the quest- ask a question, they are explaining the data and such that they have.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. The routines of scorecards, building and district scorecards, I think does help this quite a bit, because there is a regular expectation that you're coming with data.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And I know that that is different than it is in other places. So that, that's kind of part of the system that's already baked in, which is really good. When I read that, just to think, oh, well, what could we do better? And what I could do better, and you can hold us, each other, and the system accountable to it, is disaggregated data.
Mm.
So when we do bring data to you to say, ooh, I want to see actually how this breaks down, right? By language, by student group, by race, like, are there pieces? And maybe that goes back to the, um, culture of high expectations. You know, it's through the questioning and the examination to say, ooh, are we, do we have high expectations for all student groups? And are we looking to see that that's happening for all groups? So this is causing me to think a lot and reflect about the information that's kind of presented,
Mm-hmm.
how, uh, the data and how it's presented, and then what I would want you to hold me accountable to.
Yeah.
I think we have an expectation that this happens as a system, so that's good.
Mm-hmm. What about the second to last bullet? Board members represent the interests of the entire district. What are your thoughts on that? And there were a couple of developments on that. And I will say also that some, for some folks, the difference between accomplished and effective can be like fairly close as well. Um, and, you know, like, and I want to acknowledge that sometimes the difference between developing and accomplished is can be rather wide. So I just want to, like, that one, I want to throw out to you as, you know, would you like to discuss that one? What does that mean to you?
I think as a whole, we want, so I look at the cultural part of it, you know, because we're about almost fifty-fifty as far as, you know, Hispanic and white in our district. And we understand the importance of it being represented, but I don't know if we're really representing it, does that make sense, is what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And we're hoping maybe with our new board member, we may be able to enhance that.
Mm-hmm. So, so were you thinking more of like, a cultural representation?
That, that's a one part of it, yeah.
Aspect, okay, too, like, socioeconomic, and socioeconomic representation too, is, you know, it's just.
Yeah, just as important as well, so.
It does use the words entire district and.
Yes, yeah.
It's a very diverse district all across.
Yeah. So we got our people that are in the city and people who are on the country as well. It is a very diverse thing, and we tend to, I would say, run into a lot of the same people.
Yeah.
Right?
Sure.
So, um, there, there is that factor as well. Not intentionally, but we, we do.
Let's see. What about, let's see, what about the third from the bottom? Each member of the board understands and respects the distinction between the board's responsibilities and the superintendent's duties. So knowing that you had a pretty high score on the rules and responsibilities piece.
This one surprised me, honestly. This, this, this one and the one at the bottom surprised me the most.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say, I think I was the developing one on this, because my lens really pays attention when we go operational.
Mm-hmm.
And during board meetings, I hear about conversations that happen between the superintendent and other board members, including myself at times. So I think I just said it helping, I think we, and to me, that was a way to say, I think we always just need to be as attentive to that as we can. And if in our minds we're saying, you know, should I, should I bring, is this overstepping? Well, we probably are overstepping. If you're saying that before you ask the question, then it probably is a sign of, ah, maybe this, hey, I'm going to deep. Maybe I'm do- doing this from my personal perspective, rather than the board and district as a whole. And it's not a bad thing, we do a really good job of it. I'm just super vigilant about monitoring for it, so I think that's why I said developing, because we have room to get better at that.
Absolutely.
That makes sense.
Absolutely. I, I, I appreciate that. I wonder what I think would be helpful? Is there something, how, what's the best way, the easiest way? What's the code word or phrase that we could have where I could say, hey, I think this might be in a way that's not threatening, right? For you or not awkward for me, that, that, that takes it for what it is, which is, hey, I think we might be close here, and not the, oh my gosh, why are you saying that, I'm not allowed to say that, or, you know what I mean? It would be helpful for me if there was some kind of phrase that we had, that we knew, in my most loving way. I would say, well, I think this is a, um, that, that I knew that you knew, right?
Mm-hmm. Uh. Do you mean in a board meeting or outside?
No, I mean, I think probably outside of a board meeting. I think the in-board meetings, even from like the very first one that I came and saw before, the board does a really good job, e- each, each other, right? Of saying, well, hold on, i- if one person kind of goes into the weeds, or it has an interest in something, somebody else always kind of pulls them out. I'm really thinking about conversations, and there have been some conversations where I will tell people, oh, I'll let you say, and I'll let you tell me whatever you want to tell me, and I'm just not going to be able to respond back, or, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it would be helpful if there was some kind of phrase that I knew I could use, that you knew, that it was my very nice way of saying.
Code word.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, right. Yeah, you're overstepping here.
Right.
Right, which, with it being felt in the, the best intent possible, that I think that would be helpful. I just, and I think it could be different for every group, but I think that would be helpful for me.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and that's a really good point, too, is that we want to make sure that, because you're in a bit of an uncomfortable position.
For sure.
Being that you report to us.
Yeah.
And if we, with every great intention, have you as something that is maybe more personal in nature, and that we're trying to impact budget decisions or operation decisions or whatever. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, some, a way to, a way for Lisa to say, Sherri, um, uh, step back, you're, you're, you're crossing the line here. And that's kind of what it is, is it's knowing, because I think for everyone in the room, the line for some of us is more clear.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I think for you, the, the line probably is pretty clear, because it's your world.
Yeah.
Though when you can identify that we're, uh, stepping over the line a bit to, to be able to cause back from it, yeah, I, I'm, I'm open to a, a phrase or something that could help with that.
I'm not a phrase person, I'm just a straight.
Direct.
I mean, I, I don't.
I don't find you threat names.
Yeah.
So. If anybody else wants to come up with a code, quote phrase or whatever, but like, I'm a straight shooter, so.
I would be supportive of you saying, oh, Sherri, you're, you're overstepping. I mean, that, I'm, that could be the phrase.
Yeah, okay.
Right?
Does that, yeah, does that feel too forward?
No.
No.
If we all, if we've agreed to it, then we'd agree to it, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that would help for everybody, then, I mean, because the closer you can just get to candid conversations and feel like there's a trusting relationship there, then.
You said.
We don't need the euphemisms, we can just be.
Yeah, that's it. I, and I appreciate, right? I, and I, I appreciate that, because, yes, most of the time when that happens, it's in my experience, and not, you know, just limited to here, it's because there is something super valid.
Yeah.
Right, and that you're passionate about, or that you've heard from somewhere else, right? Like, it's easy, and ninety-nine point nine 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 percent of the time, it is with the best intention.
Yeah.
Right, and I can kind of feel it's happening, because in my mind, I'm thinking like roles, right? Like, wait, hold on, how, and so it's helpful for me to be able to, um, have a group agreement about what that sounds like.
Yeah.
And does that, I think overstepping is the kind of a good phrase?
Yeah, I mean, if that, if that feels authentic to all of you, then that's a good phrasing, right? I mean, like, that, if that feels good to all of you, then sure, then have your, then be candid and, and nobody takes it personally, right? I mean, that's just, that's the, that's a good boundary.
Yeah.
I mean, and there, there should be boundaries, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I'm, I, I, it's good to hear that you all do a good job self-managing in a board meeting too, because that can be tough, and that can be like, I mean, and I hope that everyone feels empowered to do that as well. Like, it should never just be on the chair, whoever the chair is at the time, to ensure that that is done, right? Anybody, everybody should have the knowledge, and anybody should feel empowered to be like, ooh, let's, let's make sure that we are stepping back and remaining in our governance role, and remembering that our job is policy and budget, and you know, whatever, and everybody else like, hopefully also feels in a place that they feel comfortable with that. And so, so what I'm hearing Dr. Holland say is that, like, that happens in board meetings too. Do you all feel like that?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think Sherri sells in that area, and, and I appreciate that a lot.
That's good, that she's, yeah.
Yeah.
Giving that.
Don't feel awkward.
Yeah. You've got a governance expert, I know.
I don't know if I'm an expert, but like I said, it's just kind of whatever, for whatever reason, I'm super tuned in to that, so.
It's okay, it's a strength.
It's good, it is a strength, right? It is a strength.
Probably has a lot to do with your profession.
Yeah.
I know, I mean, and that makes sense that you would be with the profession that you're in, so.
Are you in compliance and some?
Well, I'm in human resources.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah, absolutely. Anything else on the, this is a, this is a great, thank you for diving into these questions.
Yeah, this is a good.
Sometimes this gets overlooked, but I'm really glad that you took some time on these to, you know, to not only calibrate, but really think about what these kinds of things are. Anything else in this, on this slide?
Well, did we run and just touch on all of them?
Did we not? Did we miss any type?
Fifty-two?
Oh, yeah, board agrees on this, which high levels of student learning are expected. But I think that's.
Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah. Thoughts about that one? How did you all read that one, first of all? I wonder if there's a.
I read it that, that, like, that is our intention.
Mm-hmm.
Didn't know if it was being conveyed in, in, like, you know, something with like, that's how other people also view it, right? In the system, whether it be people at the district level, people at the school level, right? Um, as students, right? I mean, you just know whether or not a teacher has a high level of expectation for them as well, and they, and they believe in them. So, like, I read it as, okay, that's our intention, but is it happening? And is that being perceived that way?
And it, and I don't know, I think I probably said we're effective here, and if, if I were to think we were developing, it could be that there might not be consistency throughout the district or the systems.
Mm-hmm.
Like, some are still kind of in more developing
Mm-hmm.
stage versus others, so I think that could be maybe.
Mm-hmm.
But could be developing is just a, a consistency between buildings and, depending on the teacher, you know, that type of thing.
Sure.
So, possibly.
When I think of this in relation to you all too, I think that the, um, the main influence that you have too, the, the structure that you create for expecting high levels of student learning is your strategic plan, right? Like, that's what I think about, like, that is, that's your north star that, like, obviously gets transmitted out to the rest of the district. And then all the things in that over which you have influence, right? And, um, and so, I mean, not, I'm not telling you that's what you have to think about, but that would be, you know, one of those pieces, it's like, well, what is the board's role? Like, you're not going to implement any system, but if we think about what's the board's role in doing that, that would be one of those things that would be one of the major systemic pieces that the board would have influence over.
A lot of these tie into that.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I thought often on the strategic plan as I was looking at the different questions and such.
And then how do you monitor that? And how do you align your budget to that? What do your policies look like? All of the, you know, the work of the board, um, if done well, can really fit within that. Okay. Um, anything else on, on this that you want to discuss or feel unresolved about, or have questions about on this?
I like this sentence.
Good. Okay, now we're in the, what do you want to do with this information? So what I would love is for you to leave with, depending on what your capacity is and your workload this year, which I don't know. Um, I would like you to develop, um, at least one goal based on, based on this. And we can spend a little time on this. What I did was come with, um, some sample goals. Now, the, the weakness in that is that I make things up based on what I see here, and then we have a conversation, and those feel like obsolete, right? Because then I hear you talk, and I'm like, oh, well, I should change that. But at least I'm not, you know, the, the reason I come with something is not just open up a blank page and say, what do you think?
It's like, slight is a.
Yeah, it is, and, right, and then everybody goes, I don't know. So, so I'll show you what I came with, and then, then maybe we can use that as a springboard, and, you know, we can say, okay, those are terrible ideas, but you give some words. Um, okay, so possible goal areas. Um, talking about disaggregated data, and what I also wanted to do is say, okay, what are the strengths that you identified that you can like keep in mind as, you know, that we can leverage for looking at these? Using disaggregated data when possible and communicating openly to the public, when and how data is used to make decisions? Because that was another one that just had a slightly lower score about, you know, how do we communicate to the public when and why we make decisions based on data as a board? And I noticed that, you know, you identified a strength in aligning budget. And I noticed that, you know, you identified a strength in aligning budgetary decisions to strategic goals, so if you're doing that, like. Um, let's just push that a little further and then communicate that to the public. Um, again, this is based on interest and capacity, but I saw this commit commit to building relationships with local, regional, state partners to advocate for district needs. Use strength in modeling positive relationships, if you've got that strength, you could do that. Um, and to reflect standard six cultural responsiveness, developing a process to consider decisions through the lens of cultural responsiveness and bias. Possibly involving community and staff when appropriate, so I don't, you know, I don't know what that looks like right now, but if you wanted to also bring in community engagement. Um, you know, how does that wrap into an equity lens, like, how would you, you know, increase that? And using your strength in shared vision, focus on student learning, you've got a strength in that area, you know, using that lens, using um your ability there. Or and or pick something from the incongruent slide, and we just had a great discussion about those kinds of things. So um so that's my offering of, we could springboard off of these things, um just to give you some ideas. And um and now, I would say, do any of these resonate as a starting point? Enough to, or did any of these spark ideas of your own?
Can I ask a few background questions at my helm? Um, just because as we were talking, I was thinking about, I know the district had done some work, and I'm not sure if it was at the board level or just with staff in terms of an equity framework. And kind of questions that are used, that staff use when they're meeting with each other, we use in our administrative meetings as reminders of like, here are questions we could ask. Um, when we're making decisions about who's at the table, who's not, how, you know, the impact of decision making. And so I wasn't sure if that work was done just on the staff side, or if it was done.
We were presented with.
Okay.
The question is hard. As far as like, yeah, informative.
Okay.
But not as a practice.
Yeah. It hasn't been workshopped. Okay, okay, um, that is helpful to know, cause I just didn't know. I knew that work had been done, and I know what it kind of has looked like on that's on our side in terms of. Like, using it and putting it into practice more, and putting it into conversation and decision making more, but I wasn't sure. Oh, cause I feel like there is some momentum there, and there had been some um work done in terms of practice that might be easy to take it back on.
Yeah, and I wonder if we can catch up on that. Is it word or not? Could be, could be that a goal is to. Learn more about and apply regularly. Cards.
That's a great thought.
Basically, just the the decision-making practices that that are being used within the schools. Using those as the board to or at board level, yeah, and making it a system-wide.
And those can certainly be, you know, we do this work all the time with boards, and often, the district is ahead of the board, right? And so, like, as far as, you know, using those kinds of questions at the district level. And often, what we will do to facilitate that is, okay, what's being done at the district, let's adapt that for appropriateness with the board. So you're you're making big decisions on budget, on policy, on program adoption, you know, whatever. Like, in the classroom, questions won't always translate one for one. But what are the themes of those questions, what are the kinds of questions, you know, you're still gonna ask questions like. You know, who is at the table for this, what are the intended and unintended consequences of this decision? Right, like, what are the assumption, I love this one, what are the assumptions that we're going into this conversation with, right, as a first question? And um doesn't have to be very many, or else it becomes cumbersome, and you don't wanna use it.
Yeah.
Um, but um, you know, taking what has already been done so that it is related. And then saying like, okay, what's the board's role, and then how can we, and then, you know, you've got boards that like, that keep them at their table. And they ask their five questions whenever they're presented, you know, a decision that either A looks small, but actually is big. Or like, the big decisions, you know, and then just practicing that, and that could be, you know, and if you if you are wanting to look at. The cultural responsiveness standard, that could be, you know, a way to do that, since you've already got district work being done about.
And we did create a kind of an equity lens system.
Oh, you did, okay, do you use it?
Yeah. No, that's the thing.
Right.
We have these resources, but they're not ingrained in how we.
Yeah.
How we do it, I mean, I think we all are mindful.
Yeah, we're getting really hard about the gray ones.
And I think being more like having it be at our table for every. It would be, could be a cool goal, but yeah, that's an idea.
But yeah, looking at these bullets up here, I like one and three, because two's got the best of intentions, but like. In my view, one and three are gonna make the biggest impact for our students.
And.
I'm not a politician either.
I've gotta just be very facetious and say, Andy's got it covered with her marriage, we're good, he's married to the mayor.
Yeah.
Oh, well, I mean. I'm kidding.
I know, but like, I feel like those are definitely gonna impact our kids more than.
Yeah, yeah. Right.
Yeah, I'm not a I'm not a lobbyist, that's that's Sherry's.
I figured out the discussion we had on that, as soon as I got here, I was like, you're probably not doing this.
Yeah.
Which, and I wouldn't want you to do all three, right, I mean, I think that's too much, you've got other stuff going on.
But either one or three, I'm on board with.
I am too, and and with the data one, I just feel so, I think, I don't feel. Very equipped to talk about the data, like, naturally, I understand it, but I'm not in the education world, so. You know, I'm the one who asks, can you spell that acronym for me, or don't let me, I mean, so I'm really.
Those are good questions.
The basic. Um, so sometimes I just don't feel very confident.
That's right.
Right, I just sometimes don't feel very confident talking about the data specifically, so I think there's room for me. Just as an individual board member to just gain more competence in that area, what does it mean, and like, in my own words, repeat that.
Well, I wonder if if that's a need for you, Sherry, like, is that a need, and and remember, you're gonna have a new board member as well, who's gonna need. Onboarding, and depending on their level of involvement with the district or or whatever, they might need a whole bunch of skilling up about like. What is all the data, and I wonder if there's, you know, a partnership and learning opportunity there between you, Dr. Berlin, and the board, like. Is there a work session to be had there on like, all right, some data literacy, like, what are we using measuring, so that when we bring this, like. There is that, you know, here's all the acronym, I mean, like, this is what we're measuring and why and how, and, you know, just being. When you get your new board member, like, kind of a primer, and start there, and then you're using, and then you talk about, like. What are we monitoring and how, and can we get more disaggregated, and what, how do we just grow that?
One of the things I've noticed, and and I get why, is that sometimes there is um in smaller places. I don't wanna say there's a shine away from, but sometimes disaggregated data, because they feel like the groups that it represents are so small. Right, when you have six hundred and eighty students, and when you have a specific um population of students who, when you start to disaggregate the data, either, you know. Aren't doing as well, or you, or it just causes questions, like, you wanna get curious about why, it's really easy to say, oh, well. It's such a small group, it's such a small N size, that that the swings are pretty drastic, it's pretty variable, it's it's kind of more volatile because the group is so small, so. Really, what can we, what can we glean from that, so sometimes there is this, um. There is a habit to not disaggregate the data.
Yeah.
In small places, because it's, oh, well, it's just so few students that, and 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 so. I think what I would say is, what's helpful to do is to do it over time, to see, okay, yes, maybe that is a small group of twelve. But it's always that group, the the twelve kids in that group change, they matriculate out of your system, they, but it's still always the same, right? And so, um, I just wanna put that out there, that I know, even in, you know, my some odd months here, um. One of the things I've run into looking at disaggregated data in conversation is that.
Yeah.
That piece that it's, well, we're such a small N size, that, you know, does that really? Does that really, you know, is it representative, or or, you know, one or two kids swings it by this percentage, so what does that really tell us? Well, it really tells us that there's a group of kiddos.
It's still those. Like, does he just say, like, let's ignore that?
I mean, like, I do wanna just put that out there.
Yeah.
Um, that that is, I think we, I, we need to do a better job of presenting data that's disaggregated, and just to know ahead of time, like. To just prime the pump for me, for you all, that that is something that is, um, we'll just have to be intentional about.
Mm hmm.
Um, couching when that comes up, because it it comes up, especially when you see data that's hard. Right, that's really easy to sell, um, yeah.
And the other thing to, that is, there are cases potentially where that disaggregated data is like, oh, I know who that student is.
Correct.
Or that group of students, I know those names.
Yep.
You know, and that's, I think, we avoid it for that reason as well, as well, we should sometimes.
Yep.
So, that's that's the other hurdle that we have, right?
Yeah.
To identify.
That's right.
They are.
Especially.
Great, specific data.
Yeah, it's very specific.
Yeah.
And.
Right, which is why at some point it is non-reportable, right, I mean, like. Right. So what are some thoughts about, like, you know, having some sort of, you know, I don't know, work session at some point, I mean, I'm just starting out ideas to like. You know, get get some information about, like, what is the data that is used here, like, what are the, what are the measures, what are the. District-specific assessments, and then like, looking at what are the agreements as to what the data looks like, how it's gonna be disaggregated, that kind of thing.
Chris, and I really liked that idea in timing with onboarding.
Yeah.
Member of the board, depending on where they're at with their.
Yeah.
The data, yeah.
And I told you, Sherry, don't feel bad about not knowing the all the acronyms, because sometimes you just can take it. Make up a new acronym to the same thing.
Yes.
Yeah.
I work in HR, so we use acronyms all the time.
Yeah.
Just tell me what you're trying to tell me.
Okay, okay, so we got a data goal, um. Do you wanna stick with one right now, did you like three? I mean, is it as simple right now as like, maybe using your, maybe reviewing your existing equity lens that you haven't used in a while? Keeping it with you, did you wanna do some work on that, or do you wanna?
Are you talking about how many goals, one?
Is that what you're talking about? Well, uh, I'm I'm looking at, so you were interested in in, what I heard was that you you liked the idea of number one, bullet number one and bullet number three.
Yeah, I was, okay. Not the three goals.
Not three goals, yeah.
Number three.
Bullet one and bullet three, okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so I was wondering if you are interested in um kind of the easy win of looking at the the framework or the the equity lens you have right now.
Yeah.
Maybe reviewing it, seeing about updating it, uh, and, you know, having that with you, practicing, using it.
Landing on the few three to five questions to run through with every kind of decision, right? Cause that equity lens is good, it's just a little wordy.
Yeah.
So maybe adjusting it?
Or having a moving version.
Literally like with the agenda.
Yeah. Just to have with us every.
That seems pretty quick, that's not a lot of work, um. Is there anything else, I mean, these were just sort of my ideas initially, is there anything else that caught your eye? On this slide, or anything else that we've talked about, I don't wanna again load you up with too much. Um, that you would want to pursue, maybe not even like right now, but you you would, you know, not wanna forget.
One thing that just came to mind for me, and again, it's kind of related to Q seventy one. I would like to see our board members take better advantage of training and development for board members. And and learn, have that ongoing learning, um, maybe we can commit that. Every year, we're gonna have at least one or two board members attend the OSBA conference, um, some, it's really, for those of you who haven't been to. A conference like that, it's really insightful to hear what's going on in other districts, and so, I, I mean. I don't know if there's a grant with that, but that's a personal kind of, well, I work in employee engagement and development at my organization, so. Ongoing development, learning is very important to me, as we're representing a school district, so ongoing.
I've only gone to it once, but that was like my first year, and I was very appreciative.
So I don't know that we need a goal of that, but I just wanted to voice that as something I would like to see more of out of our board, is, and I know it's hard because we're so busy, and.
And obviously, offers a lot of them on my.
Yeah.
Not like a live, but I think everybody's there, but they happen due on Thursday.
But they're recorded, and then.
But you can't participate.
Yeah.
So could they consider doing some of those at six P M?
Yeah.
So always new on Wednesday or Tuesday, it's like, well.
Yeah, can that?
I'll sign up for it, and all of a sudden, I have something, so that's.
Yes.
Are you ready?
Yeah, yeah.
It would be helpful to have that kind of flexibility.
Does the OSBA, is that the annual kind of conference, is it always November-ish or fall-ish?
Next weekend, um.
Year in the fall?
It's always uh around Veterans Day, it always always has been.
I mean, we have a summer one, too.
We did, and yes, so last year's summer one will be our last summer one that is that big conference, so we were asked, we we did a big, big survey. Um, of the whole membership a couple of years ago, and one of the things that we were asked to do is not have all of our events here on the west side of the state. And so, um, what we are doing next year, instead of summer board, is having two regional one-day events. And one of them is gonna be in Redmond, and one of them is gonna be in Eugene. And um and so, instead of like multi-day events that are that are expensive.
Yeah.
Um, we're gonna do like, one day of board development, policy, and legal. Um, and and it'll be less than like the pre-conference, so much cheaper. Um, so central Oregon, which hopefully folks will come from eastern Oregon, that'll be much cheaper, and then one on the side of.
The one I went to was in Van, so.
Yeah, Ben got super expensive, like rooms there were like four hundred dollars, I mean, you know.
You know, it's just like, it's not like a discount. That's helpful, because I think of the new board, right, like, I think, oh, what are those opportunities coming up for folks, um, and a one day? Is so much more accessible.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So that's what we're doing.
I mean, we just got done doing some be more smaller regional areas, just piece them. So with one and say one, then.
Oh, yeah, the fall regionals.
Yes, those are nice, too.
Yeah, we do those, um, we do those every year, our legislative team goes out and does that, and and talks about, you know, the the legislative session. And then, um, if the local E S D asks for it. Then there's an opportunity, this was new this year, to either get an hour of board development coming, or an hour of policy, or an hour of um. The uh public meetings law, and almost everybody who wanted training wanted public meetings law this year, cause it counts toward your required, so, um. But that was an opportunity to hear from us as well, we went all around the state, and did better, just now getting back, so, yeah. Um, but yeah, there's all kinds of ways to engage. Um, okay, anything else that you are wanting to do, I will write these up and send them back to you. I will say, as part of your transition plan, you have a couple more hours. Is there anything that I can help you with, facilitate, work on with you, that, you know, it, I mean, you've already paid for it. To include it.
Well, I wonder with, once we onboard the new.
Yeah.
Member, if we can have a mini goals and responsibilities, type of.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, no, I don't want to bore all of you.
It's always good to refresh.
Refresh.
Yeah.
Refreshers are okay.
Yeah.
Or something.
Yeah.
That's just an idea.
How do we support the?
Yeah, yeah, and we kind of frame it in that way as well, I mean, I would certainly wanna make sure that. That your new member gets what they need as far as their roles, but I wonder if we can sort of customize it to involve. All of you in that learning, you know, because you will all be mentors, too, right? It's not, it's not like an election just passed, and have you were new, and you know, it's a little bit of a different situation, so we might, I might work on what that. So we might, I might work on what that, that might look a little bit different.
I like that idea of a work session as a.
Yeah.
Primer kind of, or whatever.
Yeah.
Review of how the superintendent's evaluation goes for that new person, because that is a big chunk of the with all year long. I mean, it's just to let them know that this is a piece of what we do, work that we do, and this is what it looks like. Because there is a great process.
Yeah.
That's a big piece of.
So I might have, you know, that might be something that like, that, I mean, that you all would, just that would be a chunk that, you know, that you all would discuss. I mean, I can certainly talk about like, general role of the board, that kind of thing. Yeah, why don't we connect and talk about what are the big components that you would want them to know in addition to like governance principles and stuff that I would come with anyway? And we can turn that moment into an onboarding session for them.
Jill, is anything coming to mind that would be hugely helpful for for us to touch on coming for a member?
I mean, I've already said.
So do we want to look at our calendars? To schedule that?
Do you know for sure that Team A picks somebody in December?
Well, we can do it in February.
Yeah, you'll have somebody by then.
Yeah, right. You wanna do February? You wanna do late January? You feel pretty confident we'll have somebody in December?
I think February sounds a little better just to give.
That person a chance.
Yeah. Bring them and that's the whole. Time to go to the.
You're saying February? These people don't do anything.
Wide open.
Wide open, yeah.
I, so our regular board meeting in February is the ninth. In your brain.
Would you do this as a work session?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just putting the pin in the sand in terms of like, this is.
Is it be sixteen persons today or?
Yes, sixteen.
Sixteen, okay, so you're on six, so we wanna shoot maybe with twenty-third?
I am at a board meeting. Okay.
What days of the week? Well, yeah, what works for you?
You know, I have.
Board meetings are probably that. Where it will be your work and then your other boards, and that's.
Yeah, right now. So what's funny is that like, I have a bunch of February booked. I'm not sure when. Um, but weird. Uh, right now, I have so my Thursdays, except the twenty-sixth, are all open, like the fifth, twelfth and nineteenth.
Go for the nineteenth. You have the twelfth, you got to be. Either one is fine. Okay, let's go to nineteenth. Please. Six thirty, whatever time. Sherry reject six thirty?
Six thirty.
Okay. So, works, next work, work session is starting on nineteenth at six thirty at the district office. This will be focusing on onboarding a new board member as well as reviewing roles and responsibilities. Yeah, just to create a fresh, we're, we're all, we're, we're all us.
We'll call that two hours.
All right, anything else? We will.